Submission of Big Walnut Local Schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Crowell?
Here.
Mrs. Dorish?
Here.
Mr. Fuji?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here. So, item six, I know there's nothing under Superintendent's report, but I thought I'd just hit the button there for a second and see if you have anything.
No, thank you. I do not this morning.
And Jeremy, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to speak to before we get into a run of your resolutions.
Yeah, actually, I was just going to share a couple things. I don't know if you've been following the news, but the Conference Committee did pass a budget. And included in that is something that we've been talking about for some time, is a new funding formula. The school, the fair school funding formula did get, in most part, as what was proposed, put into the budget House Bill 110. So, it's nice that after two years of basically having a frozen formula, that we will have a formula. I know we've talked that there's not a huge increase to us, but I thought I would share the most recent of the simulations that they put out there. Shows us getting about ninety-two thousand more in the fiscal year '22, so that's next school year, and about thirty-three thousand for the next year. So, at least they are increases, but not something that is huge. I will say, as I've said before, I do think that the fair funding formula is probably good for schools in general, where it is probably more of a working formula. It's more transparent in how things have come. And it does give us the opportunity to see some growth when we do have growth occurring. As an example, this last year, I know we talked about how we started the year out flat. So, we were right around four thousand kids last year. Last school year, starting the year, we were at four thousand and six kids about. And we've grown to four thousand one hundred and eleven. So, for schools like us, where we do see growth, if you take our beginning of the year number by the one hundred and five that we grew, it's about 2.6%, which is, again, right where we generally are seeing a little over a hundred kids net growth. A formula such as the school that was, that hopefully will be signed into law, does take into account that growth in students and calculations to potentially give us additional dollars as an actual working formula. So, there are potentials for us as we grow to gain some more from a formula such as what is proposed. But current simulations don't show us gaining huge amounts of dollars. So, did want to share that. And that is, I think, it for now.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
So, I love the name Fair Funding Formula, and I recognize that that's part of the budget bill.
Yeah.
The question I would have, so you said ninety-two thousand in school year '22?
That is correct.
And then, an additional twenty, actually, what was it in school year '23?
Thirty-three.
Thirty, I see, I said twenty-three and twenty-three, so that wasn't going to make sense. And I find that interesting only from the standpoint that if that modeling is correct, over the next ten years, we would see a growth of about $500,000 under the quote-unquote "fair funding" formula, which is actually the fix to the formula that they've been looking for since the eighties. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the 500, 1,000 is the right figure in general?
Five hundred and, in what they have thrown out there, is 501 is at full phase-in, which, under all conversations, have been a six-year phase-in. That provision, I believe, was actually removed from the bill, that they were just focusing on the first two years here of the actual buy-in and budget. And I know the Senate, that was kind of a push from the Senate because they wanted more time to make sure, before they've committed to fully implementing something, they wanted more data, a couple of years of actual, of how it looked.
Okay.
Is what I've read.
So, the idea of the full phase-in, they've just really kind of modeled the next two years for us, which is the ninety-two and the thirty-three.
Correct.
And the reason for that question, because the name, again, is so powerful, and the fact that it's a fair funding model, and they're going to trumpet it as the solution to what they've been working on since the 1980s. But under the, when fully funded, you know, other districts in this county would see $32 million versus half a million for us. So, I just think that's an important conversation topic or thread to get out there, especially given kind of the discussions of today.
Absolutely. It's a valid point.
Thank you.
There's nothing else? That'll take us to item eight, Board Members' Items of Interest. Try to go back to bed here and see if I can. Board Members' Items of Interest, and Steve, we'll start off with you.
Oh, thank you. First off, to the board, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to reschedule. I know back in January, we picked this date, or the administration kind of teed up a date yesterday for us to meet. And I was unable to do that, so I thank the board for a little bit of flexibility in rescheduling this. The second thing is, in terms of sharing, I appreciated the work the administration did in terms of sending out some handbook items for our consideration that won't actually be on the docket until next month. I will not be in attendance next month, so just wanted to share some of my thoughts relative to that. I inquired with Mr. Cooper about some of the ideas here. And while I'm very glad to see a lot of the provisions relative to masks being removed and the language around COVID being taken out, that's exciting for me, not only as a board member, but also as a parent. The one request that I had for Mark's consideration was the idea that masks still be at least identified in the code of conduct or the policy relative to optional for those families or students who might be a little bit leery. Or even, quite honestly, if we've learned anything about sickness and transmission of sickness, if a kid comes into school wanting to wear a mask because they have a cold, I'd like to see that articulated in the handbook. And then, the other thing is a continued appreciation. This is the last meeting of this current fiscal year, which kind of then wraps out the entirety of the school year. So, given the extraordinary circumstances that we've been through, and this leadership team has led our students and families through, just wanted to reiterate one more time appreciation as we move into the summer months, and hopefully, a little bit of maybe downtime? No, not really.
Better than last summer.
Better than last summer. And wish them the best and thank them for all of their service, as I'm sure teachers are, have already checked out and kind of are doing their teacher things over the summer. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Leanna, how about for you?
I don't have anything this morning, please.
Doug?
I'll just, real shortly. Last meeting, there was some confusion over curriculum and who, whether it was oversight responsibility of this board or this board's responsibility. And 3313.21 of the High-Rise Code reads, "The Board of Education of each school district shall be the sole authority in determining and selecting all of the following to be used in the schools under its control: textbooks, reading lists, instructional materials, academic curriculum." Our board policies does present the board as oversight. That policy is from 2009. This statute's from 2014. Needs to be reviewed to see if our board policy is in line with statute. That's all I got at the moment.
Thank you, Doug. Sheri?
I don't have anything this morning.
All right. The only thing I have, and I was just thinking about kind of this being near the end of the year, but Laura Lawrence, I know we've talked about it a little bit, but this is her last day in the office with us officially. And just wanted to take a moment to, kind of independent of everything else, thank her for all of her efforts and the things that she's done for all the students in this community. It's a challenging role that she's in. And I can't tell you how many different folks that I talk to, kind of outside of the district, that talk about the things that we do for our folks that have disabilities in our community and the ones that are kind of working to kind of get back where they need to be academically and trying to get there, and the efforts that our district does, and how those are kind of highlighted and understood by folks outside of the community. And so, definitely will miss Laura, and I just want to thank her for all of her efforts and her contributions to our district. Item nine is public participation. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered a public community meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please reference criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. Jeremy, did you have anybody request to speak?
I have not received anything, no.
And I think today, is today the last day that we can do remote comments with the end of all of the?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. So, going forward, if there is a comment, folks will need to maybe be able to come and do that in person in our meetings. That said, is there any unscheduled participation? Anybody could have three minutes if they are interested or so inclined. Going once, going twice. All right, good deal. I'm going to move to item 10-1. It's recommended the board approve the final amended appropriations for fiscal year '21 to be submitted to the County Auditor's Office. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Leanna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheri. Jeremy?
So, this is just the updated appropriations for ending the fiscal year '21. We've reduced down those areas that need to be. And as I have shared throughout the year, it's been a roller coaster, but it's, we've ended on a pretty positive note and glad to have this one done.
Any questions for Jeremy?
Line item 599, and I did not email this to you, I'm sorry, is a pre-question, so not trying to catch you on the spot. But is that a, does that reflect that $7,144? That doesn't reflect any of the information relative to ESER?
No, actually, ESER falls in that 507 fund.
Oh, ESER.
And you'll see there that that is just what we have, that's just what we've spent for this year. And then, we'll talk about ESER in the next one as well. But 599 is actually, I believe, Title IV, which is improving the school experience, or it's something like that.
So, we've been able to use it to pay for things like supplementals and stipends for clubs that we've added to enhance student experience. It's earmarked for that.
Thank you.
Good question, though. My goodness. Even on a, right on an early Wednesday morning.
We know what Steve was doing on the car ride back while his wife was driving.
Any other questions?
Anything when you're ready.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 10-2, it's recommended the board approve the fiscal year 2022 temporary appropriations to be filed with the County Auditor's Office. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna.
So, you will notice here that this is what is being proposed for next year. Again, the process we go through is taking those, the grants that we, the allocations that we've been given, that we know of, have those in there, as well as the general fund being tied to the five-year forecast as we have presented in May. And then, other areas being what we believe will be needed, such as the bond retirement and other ones as we've gone through our budget process to plan those out.
Anything for Jeremy on the temporaries?
Okay. Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 10-3, it's recommended the board approve the advance of the following funds: $278,000 from the General Fund to Food Service. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna.
So, this one, I think I shared a little bit last meeting, but this advance is to cover the federal, we're waiting on federal funds to be deposited into the Food Service Fund. I guess there was a SNAPU with their system. We got everything in in time, really should have gotten it, but there was something with their system that didn't allow them to process it. But happy that, as we talked about at the beginning of the year, that we thought we would have to transfer money in, but have been able to have a balance and actually, with these federal funds coming in, expecting that we will have a slight positive for the year in that fund, so. But this kind of is that bridge between waiting on those funds. Any questions?
Have we done that before?
We have not done advances often.
We've done it more like a permanent fix for the year, right?
Correct.
By not like this to?
We did a transfer last year. Again, kind of the same fund, different situation. But no, we have not done advances a lot over the years.
Jeremy, does this get transferred back?
It does. Yep. Any other questions? Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 10-4, it's recommended the board approve the resolution of necessity to levy a tax for the emergency requirements of the school district. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Doug. Jeremy, want to speak to that?
I don't know if I have too much more to say. The, you will have noticed in that resolution that the amount being an emergency levy, it's a dollar amount that would be required to be put in there before we file. And I provided the board with a couple of options. None that are varying differences. As I look at the deficit that we've talked about in the out-years to meet the goals, it's probably about that 6.85. But again, if sometimes the fives aren't always the desired, so a slight variance on either side would be acceptable for our finances as well. So, gave you the dollar amount that we would expect to be collecting from a 6.8, 6.85, and a 6.9. Going to a question that Mr. Fuji asked last time, if we thought that the millage would be approximately the same as what we've been talking about for the last couple of months. So, you'll see here that the answer is essentially yes. We had looked at a 6.99, but with just slight increases that we did get, we're looking at a 6.9 as the high. So, that would be the piece that we still need from the board if this were to be passed.
Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
I think it needs to be in there before we vote on it.
Agreed, but it needs to be determined what that is as part of the resolution that we're passing.
He's offering the options, I think.
Correct.
It would be a motion to amend it with an amount that you're proposing.
The floor is open.
I guess I'll just reiterate what I've said the last couple of months, but after talking to numerous members of the community who have historically supported school issues, they have consistently told me they would prefer for us to wait until it's absolutely necessary to ask for new money. And I think we've heard Jeremy the last, at least two meetings, if not three, saying, "We can wait." And I think lots of people in this community will hear that. And then, after having many discussions with Jeremy and Angie outside of this, outside of these meetings, you know, they've both shared with me that they believe we can also wait until May. And despite the fact that we might need to ask for a little more millage next year, I think that people in this community want to be able to assess their financial situations coming out of the pandemic. They're better able to do that within additional six months rather than having to make that decision this fall. And I guess that's kind of where I am with all of this. And, I mean, I have always supported asking for funds when we need them, but I guess I've heard from Jeremy and Angie and members of the community that they believe it would be better to wait.
Jeremy, if I understand the discussion from the last meeting, there's 3.9 million deficit spending projected for next year for this year, which is? I believe it was 23.
All right, so what we are currently showing for next year is a deficit spending of 545.
That's 22?
That is 22.
How about 23?
4.3, potentially, at the current trending.
And that's going to come out of?
Not sure if I understand your question.
Well, if it's deficit spending, we have to pay it.
You're correct.
So, it's going to come out of the reserve.
That would be correct, yes.
So, we're going to, if we delay the vote, it's going to cost $4.3 million to delay it, plus the increase in the millage if it's on in May.
Again, I don't know as though I completely understand. I think we've talked about that any time that you're delaying, yes, the cash balance is used, and therefore, you generally will have to ask for a higher millage. So, I guess I'm not 100% what you're asking of me.
The 4.3 will be spent. If it's, if you put the vote off until May, the collection isn't until '24. We'll have to spend 4.3 out of the reserve. It's spent, it's gone.
The, so we would collect, give me a second to think back. We would collect on something passed in '22 and '23. So, a portion of that reserve may be needed, yes, because we would only get a half-year collection in '23 instead of a half-year collection in '22. So, a portion of it, yes. Again, at our, with the information we have now, the trending that we see, a portion of that would be needed.
Because the numbers you have would be no issue pass, no new money, correct?
Correct. What I'm looking at, what I'm looking at here, yes.
The numbers you just referenced.
Correct, yes.
Well, and just to clarify kind of the terminology there, I mean, I don't know that it's, I wouldn't think of it as, it's a cost, an extra cost, the 4.3. I mean, that's essentially moving for the typical, you know, average family that's moving money from your savings account to your checking account. And this is, you know, we've worked really hard to build up our cash balance, and it's not necessarily something we want to do to get into it. But I think, you know, given, given the last year and everything that's happened in the economy and kind of been, you know, people are a little bit unsure about what the rest of this year looks like. I don't think it's, you know, ridiculous for us to use some of that to kind of give people a little bit of a bridge to. You look like you want to say something.
Oh, I always want to say something.
Go for it.
Well, number one, it's not our money, it's their money.
Correct.
Okay? So, they should have the voice whether to spend it or not, which means putting the levy on in November of this year, so it's not spent. Instead of waiting till May, which would push it to the '24 collection.
'23 collection. So, we, if it was?
But in order not spend that money, it needs to be collected in '22, or partially collected in '22, half-year.
That is correct.
Which means that you have to vote on it in November of '21.
That would be correct.
I'm interested, Leanna, I'm going to come back to a point you started with around having heard from Jeremy that it's okay to wait, or he would feel comfortable waiting. And he does actually make that exact same statement in the Eagle Gazette, Eagle Examiner, that just came, arrived at my house earlier this week, so. Except that when, Jeremy, you started your comments at the last board meeting, I actually think you might have been reading, so you can definitely check me on whether or not my recollection is correct here. But I actually think your very first statement out of the gate in that, in that meeting was, "I recognize that there is a need, but that I would feel comfortable waiting." So, first, I need to verify that that's what I heard.
Let me pull up my comments.
Because that would be a very different, and here, while you're doing that, I'm going to fill the dead air, if that's okay. That would be a very different perception on my part of what I thought I heard versus what maybe Mrs. Lee heard in terms of recognizing the opportunity to wait.
Give me just a moment.
No problem. If it wasn't the first statement, it was in that first paragraph. We can all listen to the HVAC rattle in the back corner of the room.
So, I didn't read this verbatim.
Okay.
But I mentioned at the beginning of my comments that the need for additional new resources for our district has not and is not anticipated to change. That the need is, has been on the horizon for several years, which I think, as we've gone through the five-year forecast over the years, we've seen that same, that same trim line. But we've been able to monitor and make adjustments.
Sure. And I appreciate, so in essence, my, my, number one, I'm happy that my recollection is somewhat accurate. And number two, I'm taking from that statement the fact that while we've seen it, there is a need, and we've been able to identify that for a period of time now. As I reflect on the presentations by both you and the leadership team of the district, everything's couched in, you know, wanting to be financially stable and secure, but that at some point, there's going to have to be a moment of decision or consideration.
Sure.
And in my mind, the idea, now coming back to Mrs. Lee's earlier statement, so there might be a point of, it's not really contention, it's just how I hear things versus how you might hear things in terms of what Jeremy's saying. The other side to that is, the cheaper solution to that in terms of being financially stable is in the nearer term versus the far, is that the right English? In the near term versus down the road. So, now my question would come back to Mrs. Pollitt, oh, so sorry, Mrs. Hamburg. It is a bad habit. Mrs. Hamburg can say, you know, at some point, with whatever the taking from the savings and placing into the checking account metaphor we want to use, would there be outcomes that would be realized for students in the following school year? If a May attempt was successful or not successful, would there be a decision point there?
If May, if we weren't successful in May, we would have to probably delay some of the new positions that we wanted to add for the following year to support both growth and whole child, the behavioral health, the mental health support, etc.
Which we've been talking about now for the better part of 18 months. I mean, as you and Mark and the rest of the principals have put together this plan, we've kind of been thinking that this would be an opportunity for our district to continue not only being financially responsible, but also upholding the outcomes of this plan as considered for students.
Yes, and we would need something to pass in May to help to continue to support the things things we've been able to put into place with the federal funds that we've gotten as that Band-Aid.
So while, so then I'll come back to my initial thought. And at one point, Mrs. Lee, I was, I was prepared to walk off of that initial thought based on what you said with the conversations you've had, because I think it comes back to this, this single underlying tension. The underlying tension of, are we the five members of this board to be reflective of our community, or are we the five members of this board intended to participate in leading this school district based on the needs of the community? And, and I don't, I don't even really intend to make any light of that at all. One is, hey, so here's what I'm hearing, therefore I come into this space as the mouthpiece of what I hear, and the other is to take the work of the treasurer and the superintendent and attempt to lead in that space.
Oh, I think, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Thought you were finished.
No, thank you. And if the district is saying, hey, there's been a need, however the, it might have been phrased in the last meeting, and that need is on the horizon whether now or in May, and that if not successful in May, there would be a ramification relative to what students might see in the classroom in that fall, then the earlier we get that on the ballot and start making that message clear, the better chance we have of providing students the outcomes that we as a board and the leadership team have ideated on. So to that end, I, I continue to believe that the right time to attempt to do this is now. There isn't an imminent looming, if not successful now, then, the, the opportunity is, this is the cheapest we'll be able to do it, because the collection cycle will be right and we'll be able to backfill our savings, if you will. And that if we were to wait, there are potential ramifications in the next year. So, better to take our medicine, not medicine, that's not the right metaphor, better to do this financially now and give our folks the opportunity to weigh in on that based on their vote. By waiting and having the potential implications to students arise, and it being more expensive to our community, then I think that we risk that continued, well, we're going to have that perception no matter what, but we risk emboldening that perception of, well, it's, it's carrot and stick. There is a potential negative outcome to our students who are holding us hostage as taxpayers. Sorry, and I, so now, there's the, there's the delineation, I'm, if there was something you wanted to...
No, I mean, I guess I appreciate your comments. I think, I think it's a little bit of both. I think it's hearing what our supporters are telling me, that they believe that after hearing Jeremy a couple meetings ago saying, "We can wait, we have the federal funds to serve as the Band-Aid," and that if members of this community are better able to assess their financial situation by waiting until May, I mean, and this isn't just one group of people, it's been multiple conversations that I've had with the community. And I've had this conversation with Jeremy, that, okay, based on how conservative Jeremy is, and he and I kind of talked about, you know, if we would wait and go on in May, and do we really look like we're at this 23.8, you know, cash days in 2026? And we know that based on how conservative he has been, that, I don't believe that we'll even get to that point. And if, I understand, you know, the leading part of it, but I also understand that when I heard loud and clear from Jeremy in a couple of these meetings, having talked to Angie just recently, that they believe we can wait, I think that we listen to their guidance and that of folks who continually and regularly say that they will always support a levy, but yet, when they're hearing from others who are sometimes maybe a little bit on the fence, but yeah, we really support the schools, but right now, we just don't know that we can look at our financial situation and say yes to the schools. And we'd like to have a little bit more time to get there.
One thing I want to throw out that I don't know if it's been mentioned, but, and Leanna, I know you have a lot of experience with campaigns, and Sheri, obviously, in the past with being the treasurer. Having been very involved with multiple campaigns from the school end, I'm concerned about, I think we need to decide on a time, because when you just throw something on and then put it on right the next election, you deplete your campaign funds and, and your volunteers get very taxed. So, that's just something in talking with some of our folks that have run the campaign for us, I know they're concerned about, that if we're, the idea is we're putting it on in November with the mindset of if it fails, we'll put it back on in May, that, just concerned about having campaign funds and people to run it, because I know the people that typically run it are concerned about doing it in November. So I just wanted to throw that out for consideration, just, I, I know not all of you have been as involved with how, how taxing it is to run a campaign, so, and not the use of the word tax like we're talking about right now.
And I, and just one, one point of clarification on that, my intent wouldn't be that it would be like, hey, put it on now just to get the messaging out and be okay if it fails, like, that's not, just so...
I know we talked last meeting about kind of like a, you know, let's use this as a way to find out what the community wants, so, and I'm not saying that what you meant, but I just want to clarify that, I just want to caution us that, you know, we're not in a situation where our campaign committee is sitting on tons and tons of money. So running back-to-back campaigns is challenging from that standpoint, too. There is research around, you know, the amount they're able to spend with getting the message out, because as much as this is so prevalent in our minds, and we're thinking about it nonstop, there are people in our community that have no idea. And so it does take money to just get the message out, just, just something to consider. And that's, of course, not school district money, but, you know, private money that's raised to support that, and it takes a lot of work to get it, so.
While I do have experience with that, I think that has come into play a little bit for me, but I think my perspective has been more informed by the industry that I work in. I'm a CPA, I work with people, you know, community members, community business owners in this county and throughout the state on a daily basis. You know, there are some people who financially have, have not struggled all that much through the last year, year and a half, but then there have been a lot of community members that have really struggled. And a lot of people that, maybe they haven't even had, you know, a huge hit to their financial situation, but just are very unsure about where things are going. You know, there's a lot, a lot going on in the world and, you know, with economics and everything else. And I think last year just left so many people feeling so unsettled and uncomfortable, just a little bit of this, you know, kind of, just unsure about, about how to feel, not feeling very confident. And, you know, to your point about if we need, if we need the money now, well, I would argue that we, we always need more. I mean, we could always find more programs to help our kids grow and learn, you know, I think that's, we're never going to say there's not a need. We, we will, we can find things, you know, to do to help these kids, you know, to inspire and guide all of, all of the kids in our community. And I think it's just a fine balance of determining, you know, what the needs are and when is, when does it make the most sense for the community to do it. You know, as a CPA, too, I understand budgeting, and, and like Leanna mentioned, she, you know, she knows Jeremy is, is conservative. I know every time I've put together a budget, you know, you're very conservative on your revenues and you're very conservative on your expenses, which means you're going to end up with a lower net number. And there are a lot of things that are baked into a budget that you, you don't know for sure. And I think, knowing what, what I've seen of, of how Jeremy and his team put together budgets, and then just kind of seeing some of the things that are happening even in, you know, in our state right now with, with working on the budget, I think some things are, are going to end up maybe better, you know, fingers crossed, better than, than we thought they would. We've been conservative on projecting the income tax revenues, and I think what we've seen so far is that they haven't been quite as bad as we thought they would. But that doesn't mean that, you know, Jeremy's gone out and put a bunch more money in revenue because of that, because we don't, we can't count on that. So I know that there's a lot of things that we're, we're basing this decision on numbers that we don't know. And, and I have the sense from everything that we've seen over the last year, that we may be in slightly better shape, you know, fingers crossed, that, and because Jeremy has expressed that with these federal dollars we've received, we've been able to stretch that, you know, stretch what we had a little bit further, I, I just feel like if we can hold off to get our community in a situation where more people feel comfortable, you know, in their personal situations, that it, you know, it, it's just a better solution.
I find it strange that I'm on, just wanting to point out the opposite of, of that point. I agree with everything that you've said in terms of wanting to be able to plan the appreciation of the conservative nature by which our treasurer operates, the fact that the value of the stretching of the dollar and the product that our staff puts together for our students, in my mind, honestly, is second to none. Like, I do, and, and that might be a space where you have the fiscal background, financial background. My background would be different from the standpoint of educational product for students. And I do believe that what we provide for the dollar amount given is second to none. The only other, and I think just because we have the opportunity to have the conversation, it's an important point to put out, the only other factor that I would ask be considered in this is kind of the temperature of where we currently are as the district in, the lone district in the county that was all-in. One of the few districts in central Ohio that kind of followed this model over the past academic year, and did so safely, and did so just as every other district kind of pulled the plug and said, "We're not headed back." This district, you know, chose the opposite route, and through, you know, hours upon hours and weeks upon weeks of administrative time and teacher time to learn a different craft and provide their craft in a different manner, I have to believe that that is recognized and appreciated and valued. Again, I think both Mrs. Lee and myself, and I say Mrs. Lee just because I, I seem to remember the comment she made last meeting about being at grad parties and hearing from community members around appreciation for the fact that we were in session and appreciation for the services provided to our students over the last, sorry, over the last school year, that the support might be the greatest it's ever been. Now, I recognize that support can be the greatest it's ever been, but I also want to balance that with what my personal financial picture looks like, and, you know, that leads all families to their own kind of conclusion. The only thought that I have that would be additional would be the fact that putting it in the family's hands to make that conclusion for themselves, or to make that opinion known for themselves, is important to me. That it's not just a, an opportunity where the goodwill exists, but I have to evaluate things, let's, in my mind, let's allow them the opportunity to have that voice and to be able to articulate, it's the cheapest it's going to be, and we're looking out for our community by making it the cheapest it's going to be by exercising this now. Regardless of whether there's negative outcomes for students with a positive or negative, and again, I'm, I'm saying that I would only want positive, I wouldn't want to put this on and say, "Oh yeah, well, we're just doing it, and we thought it might not be successful." That's not at all the case. The case is, put it on now and allow folks to weigh in for that on their own, because this will be the cheapest it, it would be moving forward, and lack of success now means potential negative ramifications for students later. Either way, it's the cheapest it would be, and we ask for your support on that consideration.
I've really gone back and forth, excuse me, on this one, and it's probably one of the tougher votes I've considered in my time on the board. One of the things that has consistently gnawed at me in my two terms every time we've had to go on the ballot, is when I talk to members of the community and they say one of the following things. Myself or my family members are on a fixed income, and whatever it takes for us to be able to fund our schools has a negative impact on those folks. And the second thing that they say that gnaws at me is, you know what, I didn't bring the growth here, but now you're asking me to pay for the growth, why don't the people that are coming here with the growth pay for the growth? And those things gnaw at me because they're both true, but it doesn't change how schools are funded, and it doesn't change the system around that. And I guess the thing that's really stuck to me, as I've thought more about this over the last week, is there's nothing any of us are ever going to be able to do about item number one and the, and the unfortunate burden of funding our schools placed on retirees and, and the, and the financial position that they're in where their incomes are relatively fixed. But this is the one time hearing from the administration in my time on the board where there's been the thought of a money ask in some form, and the thought that we could delay it in a way that would put more people moving into the area, paying into that pot, and even though the millage may be a little bit higher, the effective millage over time will actually probably be cheaper for everybody eventually, there's a break-even point in there somewhere, and I, I'll let him do the math on that. But yeah, definitely year one, but everything that we've ever passed here in a growth mode, that millage continues to drop and drop with the growth that we've had. So, while I feel like there is definitely a, a need, you could even make the argument today, but absolutely on the horizon, if I can give our taxpayers the opportunity to not have to front the cost for growth for another year, even though that does come with some risks of having to pass it next year, I think I'm okay with that, because those two questions that I can never really answer for anybody, when I've been asked to vote to put something on the ballot, I finally have one that I can kind of give an answer to, and I'd like to be able to use that answer if I could.
And just to underscore that answer is, that because, because it's been stretched...
And because Jeremy has done the work that he's done with Angie and her team to be able to go in the spring and delay that collection year, to give everybody, the retirees to a certain extent, that half-year break.
Right.
As Jeremy was discussing collections, and it's actually more than a half-year.
Like 18 months.
Right? And then allow for more of the growth and development to come in to help foot the, for that. This is the first time we've been in a position to, to make an ask, from what I'm hearing from our staff, that we would be able to have some of the flexibility to be able to do that, leverage the economies of more people moving in, making them more responsible for the growth and the costs that they're bringing here, and it helps some of our retirees and folks that are on tighter incomes in our community beyond the challenges of COVID and everything, the economic uncertainties. So, that's, that's kind of where I've kind of fallen out on this personally.
And I love, I, I love that, and you have a lot more experience than I would in that, in that manner especially. The, again, just because it's an open conversation, right, I feel like, then the two counterpoints would be, well, we, we didn't do it for that retiree when it could have been done as cheaply as possible for them on the fixed income, and reduce the, reduce the offset as much as possible for what that individual might feel by waiting, that, that's a potential outcome. And then with what happened on Monday from the, the House in terms of passing, again, the quote-unquote fair funding model, there's going to be so many misconceptions from that as there already are, and not that we're ever going to be able to fight and battle all of the misconceptions that are out there, when at the end of the day, the facts and truth are on our side in terms of, here's what it really is. But as we look at, again, I, I'm astounded at a district in this county that's going to receive potentially up to $235 million based on the quote-unquote fair funding model, and we would receive 92 plus 33 in the neighborhood of 125, 125,000 versus 235 million, that, as that kind of fair funding model becomes more and more prevalent, the understanding of that is going to be more and more difficult to combat. So there's, there's that side of it by waiting. And the other conversation around with the seniors that I might encounter in the community, you certainly have given me a lot to think about there, but the only gnaw, the thing that would gnaw at me in the back of my mind would be, but we didn't do it... but we didn't do it when it could have been, had the least impact on you or a lesser impact on you as an individual.
Yeah, trust me, I've waited. I mean, there's nothing you're saying I wouldn't disagree with. The only, the only thing that I would counter, not counter, but maybe just to supplement what you said is, if you do wait, that is another year that those retirees aren't having to, right? Make that payment of, at that newer level. So I don't know where that nets out math-wise. The millage absolutely would be cheaper to do it now than in the spring. But I think with the economies and the ability of letting everybody hold off a little bit until they were to pay if it were to pass. Like I said, those are two questions when I've gone out to events and people say those things to me. I just have to kind of shrug because it's just the reality. You know what I mean? And it's not, you know, I've talked to countless people in our community that would love to do more for the schools, but they're just not in a financial position to be able to do it. And I just feel like if we have that flexibility, I think is, if it's there, I think we should exercise it. It's just how I feel.
Jeremy, not to put you on the spot with the hard math problem, but just listening to this discussion, I'm curious if you have a ballpark idea of per 100,000, not paying it a year, what that would equal versus the additional millage? Like, how long would it take to equal that, if you have any idea? I don't. I'm taught English.
You mean like a return on investment from if it were in?
I'm saving, I'm not paying this for a year. And then how long does it take?
Good question.
Time value of money. To equal that?
Good question.
And I don't know. That'd be a lot of math probably.
I pride myself on being able to come up with answers fairly quickly.
I know, that's a really hard one. But just listening to these points, I'm thinking, how long are we talking before it would take for me to pay the amount I saved for one year of not paying anything on this levy?
That I.
Would you like the recess till 11:00 PM?
Okay.
That one I think I'll have to, I'll have to wait on.
Sorry, I kind of thought you would know that off the top of your head, but I just was wondering that as I listened to them making those points.
Jeremy's Rain Man now. Question gets asked, he kind of rolls his eyes and he's got the answer right there. Sorry for anybody who doesn't understand the Tom Cruise Rain Man Dustin Hoffman reference. I apologize. I might be older than I think I am.
I was almost going to add to that, but I'll be free.
So there's a motion on the table. The motion would need to be amended to put an actual dollar amount in there in order to.
Vote on it.
Execute a vote.
And so in terms of that amendment then, and I think Robert's rules allows me to. So then, Mr. President, I move that, actually no. I'm going to ask a clarification. And it's 6.8, he said 6.85, 6.9.
So.
Nobody likes the 0.85 number. So it would either be 6.8 or 6.9.
So the, I put the 6.85 in there because when I take the anticipated deficit spending for '22 through '26, it comes out to about a need per year of that 8, or 7,870. As we've talked about, we do have cash reserve. So slightly under would be, we'd be able to cover that. Or we could go slightly above at the 6.9. So exact estimated need would be the 6.85. Or we're actually putting down though the amount, not the millage for this.
So the 6.85, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
So the 6.85 equates to 7.8 million?
Seven, 7,870 approximately.
So that's the amount they need to vote to insert into the resolution?
Correct.
So then, Mr. President, to that point, I move to amend the resolution to reflect 7,810,000 dollars.
Do we need to put a millage in that one too?
Auditor sets the millage.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
For this one, it's the amount and then the processes that the county auditor certifies what that millage would be collected. And I have somewhat run these by the county auditor as well. So I feel comfortable with kind of the, what I put down is the millage just as kind of a basis point is, should be pretty close.
All right, so there is a motion to amend the emergency requirements to 7 point, what was the number again? Seven? Seven point, what's reflected here?
7,810.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had the right number. Correct. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Doug with the second?
Ready for the vote?
Ready to vote.
Okay. Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
No.
Mrs. Lee?
No.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
Item 11-1, it's recommended aboard except the following resignations. I'm not going to read through all of those, but is there a motion to accept those resignations?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna. Jeremy, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 11-2, it's recommended the board approve a one-year classified contract for Tim Smith, PRE, second shift custodian effective July 1. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you, Sheri.
Second.
Thank you, Steve.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 11-3, it's recommended the board approve a one-year certified contract beginning '21-'22 school year for the following stu, or teachers listed below and staff listed below. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheri.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 11-4, it's recommended the board approve the memorandum of understanding between Big Walnut Local Board of Education and the Big Walnut Professional Support Staff agreeing to the period of January 1 through March 26-21. The attached language will apply due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the expiration of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Sheri. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna. And Angie, that's just us kind of formalizing what we talked about a couple of meetings past, correct?
Yes, it's the same thing that we had done previously with the VWEA. This is now the support staff. And it's again to cover any absences that were due to having to quarantine or that was initially covered under that act that expired in December.
Thank you. Only from the time that they received their second or vaccines.
Correct, so it would cover the return to school second semester up until the time that they were considered fully vaccinated if they chose to be vaccinated at our staff clinic.
Thank you much.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Abstain.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item 12, schedule the next board meeting. We are scheduled for July 15. I know, Mr. Fuji, you said you are out.
Sorry.
I am also. I assume we could do virtual, but.
Do we want to consider altering that date? Or can the three of us commit to not getting sick or derailed and showing up on time?
I won't commit to not.
I mean, I'm.
Either way, I'm.
Doug, you have a preference either way?
Make it. I'll see if I can make it.
And would probably be from our end, hiring items. I don't anticipate.
I think, you know, the only other vote item that I can think of would be the policy updates from the last meeting, so.
Second readings.
What would be our ban?
Do those have to be done or could they be pushed off?
I think we could probably push them out. I mean, we've, the important timing piece was the resolution. Now we're cleaning up. And just as a reminder, the changes to those policies were enacting us to be able to have the bond or dishonesty coverage instead of a bond. So the resolution was passed. I have included that in our policy that starts on July 1. Now it's just making sure that other areas that we have within our school district are lining up with the actuality. So I don't see an issue with probably waiting until August if.
That would be your preference.
If there was the comfort of the board to wait on that so everybody was voting on it.
Yeah, if the meeting is there, I don't, personally, I don't see a need. I mean, we've had the chance to weigh in with our comments or questions from the first reading till then. Just my personal opinion is I don't know that there's necessarily a need to wait if, unless there's the potential that only two board members are available on the 15th or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we're all available. I just, I want to throw it out as an option, so.
I just want to make sure there wasn't an agenda item that we really wanted everyone there for. But if you all are comfortable with the, most of the rest of the hires probably, Mark's working on right now, and then policies, this would be, we can let you know if something else comes up. But I think anything else could probably wait until August. All handbooks, thank you.
Okay.
We should be good, I would think, so we'll just keep it as the 15th. So, next board meeting is the 15th. Right here at 7:30 PM? 6:30. 7:30 AM, 6:30 PM, I'll get it right. Item 13, it's recommended.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, point of order. It says streaming will be made available on the district website. Any board member meeting or member may be virtual at that time. It still says that under regularly scheduled upcoming meetings. That's actually not correct, right?
So that second sentence we would need to take off, yes. We will, we are still planning unless you change your minds on that to continue the stream. We're allowed obviously to do that.
Yeah. And my only point.
We're all Facebook stars. No, we can't.
Are you really?
I don't think so.
Do you get frequently, and the only reason that I make that particular point is based on the question that you asked earlier around public participation in the event that somebody would want to make that. We're now pivoting back to got to be in person to do that.
Yeah, actually, since you mentioned, I do have, I don't want to say a lot. I would say far more people than I would have expected have said, hey, I watched the recording of the board meeting or I saw the board meeting or I watched it live. So for me personally, I think it's been a really good thing that's kind of popped out of all of this. And just, I just, the point I wanted to make earlier was just that we were accepting that.
Right.
So I didn't want somebody to send an email and be told no and.
No, I'm down, yeah, I totally get that.
Just out of curiosity, how many views do we have streaming? You can tell me after the meeting.
Thanks for calling me out, Mark.
All right, item 13, it's moved that we adjourn this meeting.
I will second that. It's moved.
There's a motion.
Yeah.
There's a second.
Who was the second?
That was Leanna.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you all.